Good morning, I'm Vice Chair, Clackamas County Commissioner Jim Bernard and Chair Ledlow is attending another meeting, won't be here today. And also, Don Crupp is out of town and we have Nancy Newton as our Deputy County Administrator. Would you please take the role?
I certainly will, and as you mentioned, Chair Ledlow is attending a meeting and will not be in attendance, therefore Vice Chair Bernard will be serving as Chair for the meeting. Also Commissioner Schrader is attending a conference, will not be in attendance. Sitting in for County Council is Kathleen Rastetter, we're happy to have her join us this morning. And also, as always, our exceptional Clerk to the Board, Mary Brathke. So with that, Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here.
Thank you.
Reminds me of the old days when there were three county commissioners. Well, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation, a 2015 small grant announcement, and we have Caroline Hill from Administrator's Office with a short video.
Yes, hi, good morning Commissioners, my name is Caroline Hill and I am from the Administration Office, and I am here to announce that the 2015 Small Grants Program has opened and we're accepting applications. This year, the application period goes from July 1st through August 17th, 5:00 PM. The applications, this year we're trying the online application, so people just need to go to our Clackamas County Small Grants website and hit on the Apply button, and then you can fill out all the information there. An exciting thing about this seventh year of the Small Grants Program is that the Budget Committee has worked very hard and has added an additional $50,000 to the program, bringing the total to $250,000.
Yay!
So that's very exciting, this will be able to go a long way in Clackamas County, assisting the most vulnerable residents of the county. And today, we do have a video, it is of Sycamore Lane Therapeutic Riding Center. They are one of the Small Grants recipients from last year. They work with veterans who are troubled and with horses and different activities that help them deal through their issues, so why don't we go ahead and start the video and take a look?
Sycamore Lane is more than a picturesque slice of Clackamas County. It's also a premier equine therapeutic riding center.
It's amazing, it improves mood, affect, physical ability, social interaction, there's so many benefits that come with equine therapy, it's hard to categorize them all.
One of the newer programs at Sycamore Lane, and one funded in part by a Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Small Grant, provides equine therapy for veterans struggling with physical or emotional difficulties. A disabled Army veteran who was seriously wounded twice in Iraq, Eric Bramwell, has had trouble holding jobs and reintegrating into civilian life.
Because of my disability, I struggle a lot with depression, anxiety, I've had four knee surgeries now, traumatic brain injury. I lost about 55 guys in my unit. My best friend, he died from getting shot in the back 30 times by one of our guys, you know, so for a long time, I didn't want to come out of my room, I didn't want to go anywhere. And so for me, my biggest issue is feeling like I belong again to society, feeling like I have a purpose again. And before coming out here, I didn't really have that, and this place has really given me a safe place to really kind of take foot in my life again and start moving forward to deal with all the stuff that I've been through. And there's just some sort of connection that happens when you're working with these horses.
The founder and Executive Director of the 80-acre facility, local surgeon Suzanne Cleland-Zamudio, grew up right here. Her family raised horses on the property. She established the center in part because her autistic son was not responding to traditional therapy. She and her husband invested their own money to build the facility.
We decided to cash in one of our retirement investments to build this facility, and that's never a small decision, but this is something we believe very strongly in, serving people with disabilities and serving veterans, and so for my family, this is like a dream come true.
The nonprofit facility opened in 2009, serving six autistic children. They now have up to 85 participants per week with disabilities of all kinds. There's a beginning and intermediate curriculum for veterans, which involves much more than riding. Before they ever mount a horse, they go through a number of exercises that promote bonding and trust with the animals. That relationship can be more powerful than affecting PTSD than traditional forms of therapy.
One of my favorite times of the week is coming down here.
So really out here, the horses have become our therapists, and through working with a horse, they can develop confidence, they can relearn how to build a relationship with someone. Horses are great, they read our feelings and emotions and respond to them, but they don't judge, like many people might feel a human is doing to them. So the veterans can interact with the horses, they can bond with the horses, they can teach the horse something, and through that, maybe learn something about themselves.
Something great calming about being around an animal that has this much power and connecting with it, and it puts you at ease, and teaches you to keep control of yourself, you know, no matter what happens around you, because if you spook, then the horse is definitely going to, you know, just keep it all, you know, nice, easy, even energy, everything's just fine, just like the rest of life.
Sycamore Lane received a county small grant because their program reflects the effort of the Board of Commissioners to enhance services to all veterans here.
I expressed to Clackamas County that not only do we need money for wounded warriors who have exhausted their funding they can get, but I want to be able to serve all veterans, and that's not just horseback riding, that's counseling, that's group counseling, that's camaraderie, they come out here and they have a great time together, and it's great to see them feel embraced by not just the community, but a place they can go where they just feel safe and relaxed.
You know, I'm not on my own, I've got people that actually do care and they want to help me, you know, and this place, Sycamore Lane, has been a huge stepping stone for a lot of vets, just to start getting out there and going, okay, you know what, I'm not useless, and if I can pass it along to any other veterans, you know, if we can use that money to get more veterans involved, to show them, hey, you know what, you can still have purpose in life, you know, just because you're disabled or something has happened, you know, it doesn't mean that your life is over.
Okay, well, this is but an example of the impact the small grants have had in the community. Do you have any questions about the program, about...
Yeah, I do, and I'd like to make a comment. And how much was the grant that we gave to this center?
It was $15,000.
And what's the maximum amount?
We limited it $15,000.
Fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, good. I was out past this center this weekend, and it's beautiful, holy cow. And there are other riding therapeutic centers around, but this one is really nice, and just speaking from experience of having horses growing up, and then my daughter had one, the nice thing about a horse or any pet, especially maybe for teenagers or pre-teens, it gets the focus off of themselves onto something else to take care of and care about. And that is monumental, and you can see that transition in these veterans, they're no longer thinking about themselves and their problems, now they have an animal to take care of. They're not totally responsible for them because they know it's a place they can go and experience the peace, and of course, I'm just a nut over horses, what they can do for people, so I just love it, and I was very moved by this video, and I want to thank the team that put it together. Very nice, Garrett.
Thanks, Paul. No, I was out at the same, just drove past that same place on the weekend, it was a gorgeous area, and it's a great video, I appreciate the staff doing a great job on putting that, assembling that, putting it together, it's a great story, and doing, you know, it's kind of an emotional time for a lot of us, realizing that the Memorial Wall thing will be in Milwaukee, and so there's a lot, it's a lot of thoughts about those who served and sacrificed quite a bit, and a very compelling story to lose so many of his comrades in the field overseas, so very touching.
And I'd like to thank you for your work on the grant program since we started it, I think you do a great job, and Commissioner Smith for fighting for another $50,000 a program that I started or asked with the support of the Commission to start seven years ago, it's hard to believe. Because frankly, a lot of people come and ask us for money, we never really had a system, and you know, this is a system where we can designate those dollars to the most vulnerable, and it's been very successful, and I always say that I'd love to see this get up to something like a million, so that, you know, we still have other people who ask us for big hunks of money.
Yes.
If we put all that in a pot, you know, it's probably a million dollars, but that's, we're working our way up there someday, and of course, we do, when people ask us for money, look at what they're going to use it for, and make sure that's a benefit to all the citizens of Clackamas County, but this program, and all the people who receive grants have taken great advantage of it, and we've had folks from Colton and all over the county, we spread the dollars too, so thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome. Now, I think Mary's going to put up a slide with the information, contact information for our website, my phone number, in case anybody has any questions, that's 503-655-8261. They can also reach me by email at carolinehill@clackamas.us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is citizen participation. I have Mac Woods and Les Poole, please come up, introduce yourselves and your address, please.
Hey, good morning Commissioners, Les Poole, Gladstone. I always say Clackamas County because we're all neighbors, I can't find anyone that knows where the county line in Gladstone meets anyway. Couple of things, one, I participated in some parades this weekend, and it was a real hoot, it was a lot of fun, a lot of people out, didn't make it up to Malala where Tootie lives, but they always have a big celebration and rodeo, and it's great for the community, and it's something anyone can participate in, you don't have to have money, and if you're a kid and you've got good hands, you can catch thousands of pieces of candy, and what could be better than candy? I see our friends in Salem have adjourned, and a couple of years from now, we're going to see where the economy is and what we can afford and we can't afford, because, boy oh boy, there's a lot of money spent, a lot of promises made, a lot of partisanship, and it spilled over very strongly into the Clean Fuels Bill, which, like so many things, it's got a great name, but boy, there's a lot of dirty politics and mud in that thing, funny numbers that were used to create it, and it became a real wedge of contention when it came time to pass a transportation bill, and it became some of the bargaining chip, and the transportation bill died because there was no willingness to compromise on clean fuels. And in that transportation bill was money to widen 205, and some other projects that are really valuable. Some were against that transportation bill because it included what I consider to be a bailout tax for TRIMET, and the reality was, TRIMET was going to get money no matter what, so the transportation bill dies, we go ahead and raise the TRIMET tax, I saw in one of the local publications that the TRIMET tax won't hurt too much. The TRIMET tax and the value that they're providing, it hurts me to look at it. They do some things right, but it seems like two out of three dollars they spend goes into an endless hole. Last thing I want to mention is regarding the budget process, in the future, it would be great if the budget hearings, the committee hearings, before it reaches the council, if those were, if one of those was in the evening, if it was promoted more, and you'd see more attendance. One of the Commissioners questioned, since hardly anybody's there, then the public really doesn't, they're not that concerned, and I have a completely different opinion. I do appreciate that those are available online to listen to, but you get an evening meeting for next year's budget, and advertise it, and we'll get people down here other than just Nami. I think the citizens need to be more engaged at the start of that process, because we've got a budget of hundreds of millions of dollars, and I'm glad you guys got all through it, and hopefully everybody had a great holiday. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mac.
Thank you, Clackamas County Commissioners, I am Mac Arthur Woods, and you all know me, I live in Clackamas County, I represent the veterans. Sixty years ago today, I became a teenager. Back in those days, we went to cowboy movies and it cost a dime. Since then, the prices have gone up, while the truth can't be found in some politicians. We had Roy Rogers, Gene Autry, Lone Ranger, and Tonto movies. Tonto called the Lone Ranger Kimosabi. And you may recall the famous quote from Tonto's helper, "White men speak with forked tongue." And today, sixty years later, we now realize how accurate he, Tonto, was. When I was 13, I become a short, I wrote a short poem, and now realize today how true it is. This is a poem. Many years ago, a wilderness was here, a man with powder in his gun, and went out to hunt a deer. Now the times have changed somewhat, a new and different plan, a deer, D-E-A-R, with powder on her nose goes out to hunt a man. That's quite true. That is proven true in Oregon, a lady with powder on her nose bagged herself a man in Salem, better known to us as the governor who spoke with forked tongue. He resigned after spending millions of taxpayers' dollars on cover Oregon, you know the amount, millions, and also the CRC, millions on that, it's now dead too. Many politicians in Oregon are doing the same thing with forked tongue, as they claim to be supporting the veterans, while they do nothing to help the veterans. We veterans know the big difference, and only to, their mission is only to get attention, that's votes from the public, it's like a wolf in sheep's clothing. Now, after sixty years ago, when Oregon passed the Disabled Tax Bill for veterans, rated 40% or more service-connected, disabled, for tax exemption, truly paid no taxes back in 1955, when it started, based on a normal three-bedroom, one or two-bath house, was assessed for between $7,000 and $8,000. Today, veterans were exempt, back then, veterans were exempt because they had physical disabilities, unable to work or do a normal job, while some vets paid the ultimate sacrifice, like the Navy SEAL, Tyrone Woods, in Benghazi, as we all know the news about one of our own, right here in Oregon City, graduated from Oregon City High School, Tyrone Woods, he graduated in 1992. It's easy to get accurate facts from the 36 counties Tax Assessor's Office in Oregon free. Today, in Clackamas County, we have 170,258 total tax records, people that pay taxes, while 1,517 properties are owned by veterans, that's rated 40% or more disabled, whether the veteran is dead or alive, as Tyrone Woods's wife will get an exemption. That exemption that she will get, I have all the records right here, up to almost $20,000 off of that same house that was rated between $6,000 and $7,000 60 years ago. It's not even a drop in a bucket, why is it that politicians can't do something for the veterans and get it back to what it was 60 years ago? Thank you for the extra time. And we got to know who to vote for, learn who to vote for, and vote them forked tongues out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mac.
You're very welcome.
I think that legislature needs to take up that bill, if it was up to Clackamas County, we might do something, but our hands are tied on that one. Mac, I would just like to say that...
I can't hear you good, let me come back up there. I'm all connected with Vietnam, I'm one of them.
Okay, no, I just want to tell you about my experience on the 4th of July.
Oh, thank you.
I was asked to ride on the veterans' float in the Malala Buckaroo Parade, and...
I saw you.
Yeah, I was there, and you know, it wasn't about me, but I have to tell you, I've never really experienced anything like that, because as we were going, driving through the crowd, by the way, Witherslumber truck donated the truck and the trailer, and this float won first prize in the parade. And the minute we started out, people were standing as we drove by and applauding and saluting and shouting, and you know, I'm looking around because I know it's not for me, but it made me feel like really something, and I was so endeared to see the public so, so grateful of that situation and what that float represented. It was by far, in 20 years of doing parades, it was by far my best experience, and it's an honor to work on veterans' issues. Thank you, Mac.
We appreciate you also, Tootie, in response to that comment, we know what you are doing for the veterans and trying to do, and there's another politician, I'm reluctant to give out a name...
That's okay.
...unless I can say something good. Another politician is trying to help the veterans is Allen Olson, to get it back to what it was 60 years ago, and the politicians that's looking for money grabbers has voted it down.
Thank you, Mac, thank you very much.
Appreciate your extra comments, Tootie, and you're one of the good ones, that's why I said "some" politicians.
Okay.
And I can't name them because I don't want to insult their integrity.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, it's quite long, so I'd appreciate if County Clerk would read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Consent Agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of Addendum Number 1 to the Agreement Number 140819 with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRIMET, for the Mount Hood Express Bus Service. Approval of Agreement Number 30730 with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for Mount Hood Express Preventative Maintenance and Transportation Services for elderly and disabled residents of Boring. Approval of an Agency Service Contract with Compass Group USA, doing business as Bateman Senior Meals for Food Services for five Clackamas County Older American Act Nutrition Program Meal Sites. Number 4 was removed for further staff review, it'll be on the agenda for next week. Number 5, Approval of Renewal Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, for the Foodborne Illness Prevention Program. Approval of Amendment Number 3 to the Agreement with Oregon Health and Science University for Medical Emergency Services. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for a Public Health Officer. Approval of a Renewal Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority, for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County. Approval of an Intergovernmental Program Performance Agreement with Clackamas Education Service District for the Clackamas County Child Care Providers Program. Approval of an Agency Service Contract with Children's Center for Child Abuse Medical Assessments. Approval of an Agency Service Contract with Clackamas Women's Services for Shelter Crisis Services and Advocacy Community Education. Approval of an Agency Service Contract with Columbia Care Services for Supported Housing Services. Approval of an Agency Service Agreement with Life Works Northwest for Outpatient Treatment, Transitional Youth, Intensive Care Management, Psychiatric Day Treatment, and Supported Employment. And Approval of an Agency Service Contract with Catholic Community Services for Western Washington Home-Based Stabilization Services, Child Level D and Outpatient Mental Health Services. Approval of an Agency Service Agreement with Catholic Community Services of Western Washington for Emergency Department Crisis Stabilization Services and Division for Youth. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for the Home Program to provide tenant-based rental assistance for low-income households. And Approval of a Renewal Professional Services Agreement with Passport to Languages for Interpretation Services at the Clackamas County Health Centers. I'm going to pass the remainder to Nancy.
All right, under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of Amendment Number 1 to Intergovernmental Agreement Number 28737 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the South Will Hoyt Road at Rock Creek M. 2.23. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro for the Clackamas Regional Center, CRC Wayfinding System Project. Under Finance, Approval of a Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Work and Financial Plan with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, and Wildlife Services for Predator Management. Under County Administration, Approval of a Contract with Sarah Architects Incorporated with the Clackamas County Red Soils Master Plan Update and Strategic Planning Project. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under Business and Community Services, Board Order, Amending Board Order 215-32, Approval of April 23, 2015, to reflect a correction in the legal description for the government distribution to Metro for the Newell Creek Conservation Efforts. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County Business and Community Services and Northwest Economic Research Center at Portland State University for the Economic Impact of County Seat Operations Project for Juvenile Department. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas ESD to provide funding for a part-time employee and flexible spending dollars for wraparound services for provide services through the Youth Workforce Investment Act. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of West Lynn to provide work crew services so youth offenders can earn stipends to pay restitution to victims and court fines and fees. Under Technology Services, Approval of an ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement, Contract Number 3374 with the Department of Revenue for Digital GIS Tax Lot Conversion. Under the Development Agency, Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Memorandum of Understanding between Clackamas County Development Agency and Clackamas River Water. Approval of a transportation, excuse me, Transfer of Development Agency's Surplus Property to North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Approval of a Contract with PCR Inc. for Government Camp Waterline Extension Project. Approval of a Contract with Three Kings Environmental Inc. for the Construction of Southeast 120th Avenue Extension into the Caps Road Clackamas Industrial Area Opportunity Site Project. Under Water and Environment Services, Approval to Renew an Agreement for Professional Engineering Services between Clackamas County Service District Number 1, Tri-City Service District, and Richwine Environmental Incorporated for Process Engineering and Technical Assistance. And that is the Consent Agenda.
Do any members of the Commission wish to remove any of the items from the Consent Agenda?
Nope.
I will be approving the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's removed by Commissioner Savis, and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further... Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we do a roll?
I'm going to call the roll.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is County Administrator Update. County Administrator's out today and Nancy Newton said she didn't have any items.
I understand that the commission has a tight schedule today, so I will defer the items for Administrator Kup to read next week.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to Commissioner Comments, and first up, according to the list, is Paul Savas.
Well, it's great to be back after a little bit of a break, July fourth. I think a lot of us did parades. I was involved in the Lake Oswego Parade in the morning and Happy Valley Parade in the afternoon, at noon time, and the Canby Parade later that afternoon. And lots of kids out there and it's always a time for me to reflect really about what our country's about, Independence Day, and it's got a lot of meaning. And it's always great to see our, our veterans out in full force and to recognize and acknowledge their sacrifice. Had a lot of veterans in my family and again, I think the, somewhat, somewhat always taken aback, it's kind of an emotional time for me, this time of year, for whatever reason, it's just something that just happens every year. But it was great to see everyone out there and tonight, we'll be participating in the Sandy Parade, at least I will be. And so I look forward to seeing more folks out there in Sandy. And because of our time scheduled today, I'm just going to keep it brief and keep it short.
And you have some announcements, though?
Oh, I do. I do, I do. We all have a little bit of announcement. So, you know, as a, kind of interesting, this has passed on to me to participate, all three of us are going to do something here today. And as a former Little Leaguer that played in Little League for many years, this is kind of take a moment to reflect a little bit back when I was doing that. But nonetheless, here's the announcement. Clackamas Little League Senior Boys Baseball Team has a very good chance of representing the entire state of Oregon at the regional tournament in Ontario, California. The team plays against Scappus this weekend at the state tournament. They won last year and we feel pretty confident they may win again this year. They are excited about the opportunity to represent Clackamas County and the state of Oregon at the regional tournament, which begins on July nineteenth. They are collecting donations to help support the cost of travel expense involved with getting a team of thirteen boys and three coaches down to California for a week-long tournament. If you would like to help, if you would like to make to, oh, I see, it's misprint. If you'd like to have more information or would like to donate, please contact Shelley Hooper, President of Clackamas Little League, at five oh three, six five three, zero seven nine three, or visit their website at www.clackamastlittleleague.org. Join me in cheering them on. Go Clackamas and good luck, folks.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Well, thank you. I have several things and I'm going to try to make it fast. Yes, I was in the July fourth parade in Mulalla, as you heard me talk about. I was also, took a visit up to Camp Hope and it's an experimental pilot project where we take children who have suffered domestic abuse and hardships in one way or another and put them in a camp. And for some kids, this is the first time they've ever done an activity and accomplished something on their own. And it's a great experience. I had a tour of the facilities, I saw what the kids were learning, and I am such a supporter of that. They are able to proceed with this on a grant. This year, it's going to be a two-week camp with different age groups and they actually get to spend the night. They're given backpacks and they're given water bottles that are their very own. And then they do tasks, they do crafts, athletic abilities. And we had one kid who was scared to death to go on a raft on a river. And the counselors worked with him and worked with him and said, well, you know, you don't have to do anything, you can just visit, you don't have to get on the raft. Well, he eventually got on the raft and then he stood up like this, yeah, I'm doing it! And so it was a big moment for him and I want to keep that program going and we may hear some more through our small grants program on that. Last night, I was in Sandy for a Commissioner's Corner, it was a full house, people intended, about the local issues, it was a really good discussion. We had some youth there who's going to be visiting the commission on my insistence, they're very concerned about homeless population and the mental health issues around our youth, under eighteen and eighteen through twenty-five. So they're going to be making a presentation to us and I said that I would listen and talk to my other commissioners about what they want to do. That was great. In Mulalla, I own a property, I don't live in Mulalla, but the reason I'm saying this, I got my water bill from the city of Mulalla. And in the water bill, they presented this, twenty counties in Oregon have declared drought so far, and let's do our part to conserve water so Mulalla is not next. And I'm going to be reading some tips for conservation in Mulalla and in the city of Canby, they get their water out of the Mulalla River. That is not a snowpack river, it is a rain river. So when it rains, the river goes up, we have plenty of water. However, it has not rained in a very long time and the city may be facing curtailment. I'm just going to read some things that we all can do in Clackamas County. Only run the dishwasher and the clothes washer when they're full. Growing up on a farm, I was always taught that. Don't leave the water running when washing your hands. You know, I have to say, I'm guilty of that. And turn off the water when you shave or brush your teeth. You know, these are just little things that I think will go a long way. We also got a thank you letter from everybody here, from a doctor, Douglas Lyons, when he was coming home from Africa, returning from the West Africa, working with people who had eboli, Ebola. And this is what he said about Clackamas County's Health Department. "Your staff were professional, proactive, courteous, and attentive to detail." I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to do some highlights. "As an epidemiologist, I am pleased with the rigor and thoroughness of your team. It is this kind of good, solid, hard work that will prevent the spread in the advent of a case showing up in the region. My special thanks go to Amy Flatex, Elizabeth Ibaka, Sarah Present, in addition to Paul Lewis." And he's offered to give us a presentation on eboli and his work in West Africa, and I think that would be a very important health issue that we could learn a lot about. Now, Mary, I'm saving the best for last. I'd like to introduce Arnold. He is shy and very friendly. He's adjusting to the shelter but would rather have a home of his own. When he has visitors, he crawls into their laps for comfort and security. I have one of those. He loves being petted and soothed by a gentle hand. He likes treats and takes them gently, curling up in a cozy bed. Please consider Arnold as your new pet, as he will love you forever. And you can adopt Arnold at our Clackamas County Dog Services. And the information is on that, you can go to our website, Clackamas County, click on Dog Services, and there you go, you can meet Arnold and a lot of other pets who need loving and caring homes. And thank you.
Great. Good job. I hope my wife doesn't see that.
Yeah, because this is a cutie.
We have two shelter dogs. So a couple just comments, homeless people in rural communities. We often don't even think of that, that they are actually in our rural communities. Maybe we think Portland has a lot of homeless, but the fact is, is that I was quite surprised once I went into a rural community in Tillamook County and they, very small community, and they have kids living under the bridge. And I would never have guessed that. So, you know, we are specifically working to find outreach to our vets and make sure that they know that we have, you know, we have them in mind and that they're at the top of our lists. But we also have lots of families with children who are homeless. Yesterday, the, is it North Carolina? Voted to...
South Carolina.
South Carolina voted to take down the Confederate flag. It was a very good move and I listened to a lot of the debate. And I was in the South a few years ago and was quite amazed how their vision of what the Civil War meant compared to our vision of what the Civil War meant. It was quite different. And I'm proud that the legislature voted to take down the flag and, you know, I was thinking about it when we saluted our flag. We are a country as a whole and I hope we remain a country as a whole in that the only flag we should be saluting is the American flag. I'm a small business owner in TriMet yesterday, actually, or at CCBA spoke about their TriMet's payroll tax. I've been paying it as a small business owner ever since I owned the business in the eighties. I think their request is nine tenths of a percent over a certain period of time. It is not much. They also presented with some upgrades in their system and new things they're trying. I was pretty impressed. And the fact that at one time it was considered a money pit, the employees now pay a portion of their healthcare, they have 401Ks, very much like PERS here. We do not have PERS, even though it's called PERS, they are 401Ks. That's what TriMet new employees all have. They've come out of the red and they're, they're doing a lot of good things. So I, I think, you know, I, I'm a very strong supporter of TriMet tax, even though I, I haven't ridden a bus a lot in a long time, but when I was going to college, I rode it every day. None of my employees use it, but there are a lot of people who need it and we need to be there supporting that. And TriMet is reaching out and making, trying to make better connectivity to our employment areas. And they demonstrated that in a map yesterday. So they are, they are listening, they are trying to adapt to changes in the environment and employment environment. So I think, you know, I'm going to be down in Salem next year. I don't think they were able to pass it because the transportation, yeah, so they're looking at that next year, or, yeah, next session. So anyway, and I have some announcements. I think this is kind of new for us. Next Tuesday afternoon, July fourteenth, from one thirty to three thirty, Clackamas County Commission will all host, will host all members of Metro Council for a joint work session. The topic of the meeting is economic landscape of Clackamas County. The session will be held here at Red Soils in the DSB Building across the lawn in the auditorium. And we hope that citizens will please come and attend and observe and that this is not the first or the last meeting we have with Metro. Clackamas County Commissioners will also participate in the Vietnam Memorial Wall event in Milwaukee, a program happening later this month, from July twenty-third to the twenty-sixth. The program is centered around the exhibition of the Moving Wall, a half-sized replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Washington, DC, which will be on display at Milwaukee High School from noon Thursday, July twenty-third until two PM Sunday, July twenty-sixth. The four-day event will include an opening ceremony, the reading of the casualty list from different areas of the region, an honoring military service and sacrifice parade, a recognition ceremony, and multiple musical presentations. I'll be speaking at the Vietnam Wall Recognition Ceremony on Sunday and all commissioners will be in attendance to read the list of Clackamas County soldiers who lost their lives. Those interested in finding a specific name on the memorial wall, we provided information through a computerized system to make it easy to identify specific names. So we hope we see you July fourteenth and down in Milwaukee, July twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. And that's it for the commission today. Anybody have anything else? I told you we'd get done in time. We all are heading to a various meetings, so the commission is adjourned. Thank you.